Good evening, everyone. I call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, our God, and his household, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. Please be advised at the event of your emergency. An alarm will sound. Please note all emergency exits and evacuate well away from the building. At this time, I request that you turn your cell phones off or to silent, please. Thank you for cooperation. We're going to start with additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda.
I do have two, well, I have an addition and a change this evening. So the addition is you are receiving the District Treasurer's report for the month of June. And changes, we do have an update on the Capitol Project Budget Summary. Mike Ferrari from Campus Construction did an update this morning that allows you to better see the category for what we will refer to as like unallocated. So the money that's sitting in there. I had sent you all an email on Sunday to kind of clarify a little bit of that. And then I walked in this morning and Mike had built that out, just thinking about you all, and just the clarity for this evening's conversation. So that's your change.
Thank you. We're going to move on to consent agenda. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of a superintendent, approve the following consent agenda items, 1 through 9. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Quick bit of discussion in our backup notes, page 82. I noticed we had a 26% overspend on our legal fees for last year. Wondering, I know we switched to bond speech, wondering if you could email us some information about that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions through discussion? Well, in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to communications. We're going to start with correspondence and points of pride. Mr. Billen, you're going to start us off.
Thank you. Two of our amazing Raiders attended the 84th Annual American Legion Auxiliary Empire Girls' Day at SUNY Brockport. Congratulations to seniors Hannah Harmon and Julia Wazilko, who enjoyed the week-long experience representing our school and community. Congratulations to Hannah, who was elected to the state office position of Speaker of the Assembly for her party. It's a great honor. Four of our team Raiders competed at the 2025 U.S. High School Clay Target League National Championships in Mason, Michigan. Congratulations to Devon Brown, Chadwick Littleton, Carter Hallett, and Grayson Milky on their outstanding performance on the national stage.
We offered driver's education again this summer taught by two of the best, Mr. Grattan and Mr. Jokapovich. We had 16 Raiders enrolled in our four-week program. They completed 24 hours of classroom instruction and 24 hours of behind-the-wheel instruction.
Our new middle school, high school principal, Mrs. Marcello, and assistant principal, athletic director, Mr. McConnell, hosted a student leadership luncheon for Raiders who will be holding elected positions in the coming school year. It was a great opportunity for students to meet and greet Mrs. Marcello for the first time. They participated in discussion topics, reflected on leadership styles, set goals for the upcoming school year, and gave feedback on upcoming events.
We are excited to announce that we have been awarded the NYSPHSA School of Excellence Award, exceeding the bar as 16 of our 19 of our varsity teams were scholar-athlete teams during the 24-25 school year.
And we completed our four-week, 16-day summer reading program at Calm Elementary. It was led by assistant principal, Mr. Green, and eight of our amazing teachers. And this included 40 elementary students who were provided with essential skills to gear up for the upcoming school year. Each Raider received personalized attention and engaging lessons designed to boost their confidence and knowledge in the areas of reading and math. And a big thank you to our dedicated teachers for their hard work and passion, and to our Raiders for their enthusiasm and commitment throughout the summer program. We can't wait to see all of them shine.
Thank you, all. A couple more correspondence that I have are, we have our board workshop for goal development on Thursday from 4:00 to 8:00. And we also have, we got an email today about new teacher orientation next Tuesday, 8:00 to 8:30. A few of us participated in the very beginning of that last year. So if you want to participate in that, that's also optional. So just wanted to make note of those two things. We will move to board committee reports. Who has, not on any committees?
Textbook met a couple weeks ago, week and a half ago, and to review requests for 7th and 8th grade social studies.
And we have that before us tonight, that textbook?
Yes. It's a good book.
Yeah.
I went to the elementary PTO meeting, and it was good.
Okay. We had, oh, sorry.
Yeah, well-attended. We just had to find where it was going to be, which ended up being in the school cafeteria.
Yes, because of construction.
Because of construction.
Shared services, Matt. Dr. McNair, do you want to speak on that?
We met and just kind of discussed busing between Calmom and Lebron, going over the logistics of having bus runs between the schools, getting special ed students that are going to the same location that are driving, buses are going right past the houses, looking into sharing that between the school districts. So we're not sending multiple buses, especially when getting bus drivers is always an issue.
The sentiment I took away was that any opportunity that we can discuss about sharing services is going to be explored in an effort to save both our districts money. So that, so far, that shared services has been going well.
I agree. I don't believe there's any more. Am I missing any?
Policy, Matt, right?
We had policy.
I'm sorry. Yes, and Arnie was on policy. So Dr. Chanel, would you like to update us on what happened there?
Absolutely. So policy committee, Matt, we reviewed four policies, which you're going to see this evening. When we get to those policies, as part of the conversation, I will certainly comment on each of them. In general, though, you're going to see policies that are, well, most of our policies are required by law. So you're going to see how we're sort of handling some of those. Do you want me to speak specifically now to each of them, or wait until we get to the end?
I think we'll wait until we get to them.
Okay. The only other thing we talked about, I've shared with the board a couple of times in my Friday notes, around looking at either board policy or a resolution around district spending and the way that we do contract work. So we did have a conversation about that during our policy committee meeting as well. I think in general, there's probably room for both. I think we do need to start to examine a little bit of the policy, get a little bit more specific in our language, just given some of the examples that I've been able to secure, and then maybe look at that yearly resolution that we do during the reorg to adjust there a little bit, too. So I think the policy committee has that work ahead of us.
Fantastic. A lot of work happening. Guests to the board, we have Mrs. Burns here. She is our internal claims auditor and does a report for us. If you could please come to the podium.
Yep. Thank you.
Ian, I just want to confirm that the mic is on at the podium, please.
Yep.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, how are you tonight?
Good, how are you?
Good, warm. Everything seems to be going according to plan, good? Even with all the changes this year?
Everything's on target. Brennan seems to be getting things in order. Everything's going the way I think it should. No major standouts with any bills or claims or any of that. So I don't know if you have questions?
Thank you, Mrs.
Talk back to Ian. She'll let me know. Thank you very much. All right, thanks a lot. Have a good evening. You too.
Next on our agenda is public forum. Public forum is a portion of the agenda for district residents, district staff, and/or parents, guardians of students to speak to board. However, the board members will not respond. This is a time for the board to listen, and one appropriate response will be provided to the speaker. Individuals who wish to speak must sign in, state their name and address prior to speaking, and limit their comments to three minutes. Comments or questions naming specific personnel or students are to be addressed privately to protect the rights of individuals. All speakers are to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Obscene language, libelous statements, threats of violence, statements of advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. First on our list tonight is Mr. Seeley. Please step up to the podium. How are you this evening?
How are you doing?
Good.
Cameron Seeley, 395 Kallen Road.
Thank you. I'm just going to give you one second. Can Brennan?
Yep.
You got the timer?
Oh, I do.
So not to, this is the first time in my time as president that we've had anyone come up to public forum. So I just want to make sure we're abiding by our own policy.
Absolutely.
Nothing against you.
Are we on the shot clock?
Thank you for bearing with us.
Absolutely. Good evening, board. I just wanted to speak towards the vacancy of the assistant principal. I emailed with Dr. Chanel this weekend about that. I think with the large budget concerns that we had this year, I think this is, from a parent's perspective, from a community's members' perspective, something we need to look at for that role, if we need to fill it, if it needs to be backfilled with other specialists, or is it maybe the money that we can find in the budget that we don't need to spend? From my perspective as somebody with children in the district, last year, I was a little underwhelmed with the response from the administrative office when there were issues. Not in an overly bad way, but it seemed like the assistant principal was running around putting out fires based on predominantly...
Mr. Seeley, I'm going to ask that you not mention any specific members of our staff as part of our board policy. So if you can speak in generics, I would appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
It seemed that fires we're putting out, were being put out for behavioral issues regularly, as fast as they could be put out without a plan to actually resolve the issue. It was put the fire out and deal with it right then and there. I know the school has brought in other resources as, trying not to speak generically, but new staff, psychologists, I think, PT, and all those specialists. Obviously, the school resource officers are here. So I think defining that role from a community member's perspective of how much actual admin, behind-the-scenes work is being done between the admin staff and what has to be done by them forward-facing, and how much time they have to spend with students versus the behind-the-scenes work that most of us don't see. Obviously, I don't really know to that. So I just think that it's a good time to look at that and see if that role is what we need, or if maybe there's other behavioral specialists or some, something else for that role before we fill it. And I did say to Dr. Chanel, obviously, this time of year is not great to be posting a position like that, I don't think. I think everybody looks for those postings first part of the year and tries to fill them before crunch time at school. So I don't know if we're getting the best candidate for our money at that point. So thank you for your time.
I appreciate you talking. Thank you. We are going to move on to superintendent's report. Dr. Chanel?
Yes, I'm actually going to ask the administrators to come up. So they have put together a presentation this evening. We have several plans that the board has to vote on this evening, required by the state to update. So I've asked the team to actually build one presentation and try to just kind of quickly, through their transitions, knowing who's going first, second, and so on, that they kind of work us through the plans that you're going to see later on, specifically drawing our attention to the changes that are in those plans. So it looks like, it looks like Mrs. Pete is up first.
Yes.
All right, Mrs. Pete.
So as Dr. Chanel said, every year, we take a look at specific plans that are then submitted to New York State. This work obviously happens throughout the year. So some of what you're going to hear, and specifically in regards to the professional development plan, we did a needs assessment throughout the year, talking with teachers, a variety of surveys, observations, conversations, grade-level leaders, department leaders, and all of that information is kind of compiled and then looked, looked at to build our goals for professional learning for the adults within our building. So we talk a lot about student learning, and this particular plan is around the adults within our district. Because we all know, right, continuous learning and continuous improvement is part of a school. So there are four buckets. I'm not sure if you noticed, but I tried to keep it with the A, B, C, D, and E, so we'd remember, right? So the four buckets are the four focus areas for our PD plan this year are around attendance and behavior. So what are attendance interventions? Can we get kids in a great habit around coming to school on time and regularly, and build those habits from pre-K all the way up? And PM stands for progress monitoring, so how are we monitoring their progress throughout? You heard about the Raider 5 and the Champion 5 last meeting in July, where some data was presented to you. So we want to expand upon that. What does it look like? What does it sound like? In regards to curriculum and courses, we've talked a lot about our STEAM program here and expanding that STEAM program. Tonight, I will dig in a little bit about the science of reading and some of our professional development there. We actually have submitted a proposal to the state to be approved to have, offer an arts pathway. And then New York Inspires Plan is also coming down from state ed. It's in the draft phase, but they just adopted the portrait of a graduate. So we're going to dig into that as well. We talked a lot about data-driven practices, data dashboards, using data to drive our instruction, and then some protocols as a team that we can use when we do engage in those data-driven discussions. Educational technology. So we did a lot of work last year, surveying and working around artificial intelligence for teachers, just exploring that, some professional development on how to utilize that. And we're going to continue to expand that. I think tonight you'll hear one of the policies is around artificial intelligence, and then a guidebook for students and staff, so that we have some guidance as we move forward with that. Around technology, different capstone projects at specific grade levels, as well as digital citizenship, right? So how do we create strong, kind citizens in the digital world, where their digital footprint starts in pre-K, right, before they even get here, which is a little bit terrifying? So that's kind of the big picture for our professional learning plan. Within that plan also lives, might need to do, the mentor plan. So next week, we have, I think, hopefully, 13 new staff members that will be joining us on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And really, not much has changed to that plan other than a refresh. Our focus is around building culture, like what does it mean to be a Raider, right? What's the Calmom way? Community and then connection, making sure that our new staff members feel connected and understand the curriculum as they move forward, so that they can start September 2nd, ready to roll with kids. And the last plan that I am responsible for is the tech plan. So the tech plan actually was extended. So this was a three-year plan. It has now been extended until next June, June of 2026. The state actually extended that. And after that, it'll be due June 30th, 2026. So our tech committee will actually work together next year to build that plan together, using some of the data from last year, and then the ongoing kind of feedback and needs assessment. So we'll continue to build that as a collaborative group throughout the school year next year. And you'll get to hear us again about this time next year, bringing that plan forward. I don't know who's next. RTI?
Well, this slide is not as eventful. We really don't have any changes to present with the RTI plan. The only thing you'll see in your notes is date changes and team names that have been updated. But for now, Win Home Base continues to offer that additional support throughout the day, every day, for our students K-12. And then safety plan updates, again, just routine updates for the elementary piece.
Yeah, we just had a tiny piece about when we have to send communication out about cancellation that we're just going to throw in using our social media outlets as well. That didn't exist in there, which obviously our social media outlets are very active now. So being able to throw cancellations on there, we felt was important to include as well. So that's a, that's an only change for us. So this is the big one, the cellphone. So put it lightly. There it is. So this is just the language and the code that we needed to adjust to reflect that, the policy that doesn't allow electronic devices during midday. So what's crossed out in red was what was and can no longer be. So any, any language in that talks about how students can appropriately use their personal devices, which they can no longer do. So that is now Xed out and gone. We did add the line, "Students are not permitted to use or carry cellphones and/or personal internet-capable devices for the duration of the school day." And then at the bottom, again, crossing out anything that had to do with, basically, it talks about if you have your cellphone, you can't take pictures of other people. That's irrelevant, because they can't have their phones now. So mostly, that's just language related to shifting it to match the new policy that's in place. Any questions on that one? No changes here either. Again, just dates and names. Any new individuals taking on extracurricular advisor roles are now outlined in the handbook, but that's it.
All right, last stop on my end, just a couple. Counseling plan. Over the last two years, we have taken all the standards that the state gives us and prioritized them. Can't tackle every standard for every kid in every grade. So we worked across the district to really look at when, when and where are we going to address which standards. And then in the last couple of years, it seems like we've onboarded a new member of the counseling team every year. So we need to get beyond familiarizing the team with the plan and moving the work forward. So an addition that you'll see to the plan is an accountability measure. So you'll see a timeframe when the counseling team will set an annual goal, or goals, around moving the work. Those goals will be presented to the compact teams in the fall. We'll have checkpoints throughout the year of how the progress that we're making, and a final presentation to compact committees in the spring to share with those stakeholders how that work went through, so that I can present to you a board report at the end of the year that really speaks to the work that got done. So that's the only addition to the counseling plan there. And then special ed plan updates. Annually, we update our numbers around preschool and special ed, students enrollment, students with disabilities across different grade bands and by disability. So we update that annually with most current data. So you'll see October Bed-Stay data in there. And then the big addition is, it's called FAP 222. So previously, we were required by regulation to provide a free and appropriate public education to students with disabilities to, through the school year in which they turn 21, or until they earn a high school diploma, whichever comes first. That, we are anticipating changes on that end, and we're being advised to update our policies to reflect that change. Other states have moved their FAP to 22 to align with when adult services pick up. So adult services pick up at age 22. So in order to have, to lose any, to eliminate a gap in services when school ends and when adult picks up, other states have, court rulings have said that the school is responsible until the day before a student's 22nd birthday. Our regulations haven't changed, though our commissioner, when those, when cases in New York have made it to the commissioner, he is ruling in favor of schools provide till 22. So the regulation has officially changed, but we're being advised across the board to not wait until you're in that predicament. So you'll see now a excerpt indicating that we are responsible for FAP up until, up through the day before a student's 22nd birthday. And then in the glossary section of our plan, any term that has anything to do with exiting or FAP has been updated accordingly.
That's actually a big one for us, because when you think about that, it's one more year of education that we're responsible for. So just a couple of court decisions, and the way that the commissioner is weighing in on that, just changed our budget, just like that. So always being thoughtful as we're listening to these things about the fiduciary responsibility that comes back to the district. You were budgeting and planning for kids to exit your programs at 21. Now you have to budget and plan for them to exit your programs at 22. So just something for us to, something for me to say in this moment. Unfunded mandate, we say often, right? This is one of those, and a very expensive one.
Is the district communicating that out to the impacted families?
Yes, absolutely. So at each CSE meeting, and I think in general, and Megan, if you want to step back to the podium, just in case there's further questions. So just in general, I think one thing that families really struggle with is that we are responsible to plan for the child's education up until the day before their 22nd birthday. So let's say they turn 22 in December, Megan. What happens to their school-based program that parents have grown accustomed to September to June?
So they would, they do end up potentially in a partial year of programming. It's not ideal. Although, when you have a student who is receiving schooling 18 to 22, the transition conversations about what happens after that start very early. So I would anticipate that the, we are working even more closely with the adult services that we're handing them off to, so that it's not just a random day in December that they just leave us, but a day in December in which we hand them to their next adult, adult day programming, or whatever the case may be.
And it's always been the case that when we, when we're planning programming for students with disabilities through the age of 21, we, we've had like indicators of success, like what it will look like when they finish. Taking them to 22, we're kind of holding our own goals steady, meaning programs around us haven't like said, okay, well, we're going to increase the rigor in that next year, right? So a lot of it for kids, they should have, they should have aged out. And now they're in a program doing a lot of the same things that they did the year before, because the programs aren't necessarily adjusting. So really, what you're talking about is the baton. I'm going to call it the baton. And it used to be that at age 21, we did a handoff to adult services. And adult services would then provide these same young people with a different experience. And now we hold the baton for an extra year. So you might prepare, it's a good question, because you really should think about how that's going to feel for families, because definitely, we will, the day before their 22nd birthday, every, almost every superintendent in the state of New York is going to be advising that we hand the baton to adult programming, because now you're talking about how that child's education is going to be funded. So all of this has to do with funding streams. And it's, it's an awful thing to say aloud in a lot of ways, right? But those are calls you might get. So understanding what it means, that we'll be building transition plans. We will be making sure that our kids have those transitions. Families definitely hesitate to leave us. And the longer they're with us, the harder that transition becomes. So just, you should anticipate some families feeling uncomfortable with a hard stop in December, which we don't normally think about the school year that way. But that is the way budgetarily that we are currently planning. We'll abide by that regulation.
As we should, and not to sound negative, but this guy in Albany, I'm asking, has he just randomly decided, let's let the school district pay until 22 instead of 21? So then New York State pays 5% or 6% less, because it's not their problem, for another 364 days? I, I don't care, because I knew everybody that doesn't already know what I think about New York State now does. But it's awesome that the kids are, I think they're better, they're better suited, in my opinion, staying with us
Sure.
until the day before their 22nd birthday. Regardless, I just, I just think that there's, it's a little fishy.
Thank you. Who is the lead person for that transition process?
For designing their, Megan?
Megan. Cool. Just trying to make sure there's continuity there.
Yeah. And I think in general, one thing that, a strength that might come out of this is that it has been in the past a little more challenging to communicate with some of the adult ed programming. They weren't necessarily at the table. And I think advocacy now is not just, you know, calidonia, knocking on the door to say, please come and sit at the table with us. Let's talk about transition. Let's make sure this family is comfortable. Every school district in the state of New York is saying, hey, you guys need to get at this table now to help us plan for the transition. And that's not always been an easy thing to do. So I think that could be a benefit, that we might learn more about some of the adult programming that's out there, help better connect our families. It's certainly a bridge that needs to be built. But to your point, Mr. Bickford, it's definitely a bridge that's being built by shifting the financial obligation off of the state of New York and their adult programming, and onto schools without funding that. So in the end, we're going to manage it to the best of our ability.
It's win-win for the 21-year-old.
Agreed, agreed. We agree. We agree. I mean, I'll keep them, we could, schools could continue to do programming, but I imagine folks that work in the adult and state, at the state, don't want to hear us advocate that way. But by all means, send the funding this way, and we'll keep doing what we do best. Glad to do it. Thank you, Mrs. Rogers. Thank you, Mrs. Rogers.
Yep. Is it next?
Yes, it's you.
Okay. It was like, you give me a guess.
I promise to not go on and on about this, but this is my favorite topic. So much of our work as a collective group of administrators, of teachers, and truly families and the board, is to ensure that every raider is a reader. So I, one of the big questions that you'll see kind of in this presentation is how do we, as a collective group, ensure that every raider is a reader? Whether they started with us in pre-K or they moved in in middle school, how do we make sure that they exit the walls of Caladonia Mumford literate, right? And by literate, we'll talk a little bit about what that means. Our core beliefs, really, we've kind of been honing in on this. When we say every raider, we mean every single raider, right? Every student grows every year, and it's at least one year's growth. Some of our students are struggling, and they might be a little bit behind. So that means we actually have to accelerate their growth. So I think we talk sometimes about our struggling readers. We also need to think about our, our high achievers and making sure that they are challenged and that they're growing as well. So that's kind of the first core belief. The other is around data-driven instruction. We, as educators, should know where our students are and what we need to do next to move them forward to ensure that they do grow. One of the other beliefs that we've really been digging in is authentic texts in students' hands. So we want them to hold books. We want them to look at pictures. We want them to smile and engage and interact with texts. We want them to listen to texts that their teachers are reading and maybe at home, families as well. And then truthfully, teachers are really great at instructional practices and digging in and learning about research-based instructional practices. So we're going to continue to refine and kind of grow that toolbox. The state of New York actually currently has education law that we have to, as a district, attest that we have these pillars of literacy within our program, pre-K through 3. So the science of reading, and I like to call it the science of literacy because it's not just reading, right? So it starts with oral language, phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency vocabulary, comprehension, and writing. So all of that encompasses the science of reading or the science of literacy. And there are best practices that are suggested from New York State that we're looking at to align and make sure that our program and instructional lines to those best practices. I, you, I could geek out about this, but I won't. The science of reading truly is around education, linguistics, psychology, and neuroscience, which is a fast, fast-growing field. If you want to see the brain reading, like I want to see those on our eyes because I think that we can learn so much from that science. So just know that it's not just education, not just linguistics. It's these four pieces of that puzzle kind of working together, and not one approach is going to work for every kid. So we need to see what works for that student. The other piece to this is that reading and writing go hand in hand. You are a better reader if you write, you're a better writer if you read, right? So there's that whole consume critique, and then you're, you're able to create. So you've got to read a lot, you've got to critique that, and then you're able to create that writing. And so anything that we do moving forward is going to kind of marry those two, reading and writing, components together to make sure that when we graduate raiders, they can read and write. The other piece, and I know eventually you're going to hear this a lot from the elementary schools around the volume of reading, the more you read, the better you get at it, right? So the rich get richer, the poor get poorer. There is that thing called the Matthew effect. So if you read every night, it just compounds and adds and adds up. And the more vocabulary you're exposed to, the better reader, the more background knowledge you have, and just keeps adding. So we want to make sure that our students in school are reading. We can't always control what happens outside of school, but we can control what happens within the walls of our school. And the final piece, which I wanted to thank the board for, high-quality professional development. There's a lot of pieces to professional learning, and one of those pieces is ongoing and it's job embedded, and that doesn't happen like with one step, right? So we, looking forward to next year, we are going to continue to work with the American Reading Company in regards, around professional development. We worked with them in June. We've supported that kind of initiative in June. We have a date coming up here in two weeks in August and then periodically throughout. So started the journey in June, continuing in August, October, and then throughout the year. And that will include job-embedded coaching in the classroom with our students, which I'm so excited about. That's the best professional development you can ever have as a teacher. We are also going to pilot some core units from the American Reading Company. So I say pilot because we have teachers that are really excited about this, and every day I'm getting a message, can we do this? Can we do this? Instead of one unit, can we try two? I want to try their assessment. So we have committed to piloting units one and unit two, and then we're going to assess and analyze and compare and contrast, and we're going to use the grade-level leaders at the elementary school to do that work, and then make a decision moving forward all the while with that ongoing professional development. So that's kind of where we're going, our path forward. We want to be ready in case teachers are saying, our kids are growing, I can't believe how fast they're growing. We want to keep moving forward. So we're trying really hard this summer to get everything kind of set up. Poor success. And this is probably one of my favorite pictures. So a group of people, right, working together, learning together to do what's right for kids to ensure that every raider is a reader. So you, I know in the past, maybe we haven't had this type of professional development here. It's been a while, I think, is what I was told, and so I just wanted to take a moment to thank the board for supporting that.
Again, that's that piece in the budget where we talked about, you know, we have an academic intervention teacher. Do we, do we, do we put that teacher back in place? Do we now use money and say that really what we want to try to get at is some really solid staff development that helps all of our teachers become better teachers of reading? That money that we've now allocated for this is what Lindsay is thanking you for, right? In the end, you can't get this kind of work done if you don't have the money to do it. So a really focused journey this year on the teaching of reading and writing and literacy strands is, I'm excited for it too. So thanks, Lindsay.
Yeah, of course. Thank you.
All right. So next up are just two things from me. So first of all, I, I want to publicly just give a shout out to all of our social studies teachers at the high school. I think this is my first time as principal having 100% of students that took an AP exam, regardless whether it was in AP World History, AP U.S. History, Microeconomics, and Macroeconomics. 100% of our students that took an exam this year in the social studies passed it, which was fantastic. So passing is a three or above. Colleges do accept those AP scores. Some schools accept three, fours, and fives. Some of your more elite schools are looking at your fours and fives. So I put that data in the board's backup notes for you to see it. You know, when you're pushing academically and you're starting to see that in your AP results, I would say if we go back, I don't like the word COVID, but let's go back to what we've talked about with COVID recovery. I think teachers across schools everywhere were saying, are we ever going to get back to that? And just in general, I think when you watch your advanced placement kids begin to work really hard and churn out really solid results, you know that your system is really moving on the upper end. So I just want to give a shout out to all the teachers for how hard they work. To be a teacher of an advanced placement class is a, is a big lift for them, instructionally, the amount of reading and writing that the kids do and the feedback that they need. But again, 100% passing in the social studies. Thank you, guys, for helping us put back curriculum leaders. That was a focus that we put back in the budget last year. So this is the first year back with curriculum leaders in place. Gosh, it's probably a good five or six years. And so you're just looking at some of the magic of that as we're watching our teachers really focus in on, on the teaching of their subject matter. So thank you for that, too. Last talking point for me, I do want to just speak to the assistant principal position a little bit. I did for the board do a cost-benefit analysis. We do examine every single position really when it comes open. We want to look at what is the position? What does it do for us? Could we do this differently? So similar to some of the questions that actually came up in, in public session today, I think in general, people do sometimes wonder what administrators do. And so what I will share very publicly for the board, when we talk about teacher observation and teacher evaluation, the way in which our evaluation structure is, is built, we spend a great deal of time with our teachers and going through that professional learning series. So you have to think about every principal. I'll put myself back in the principalship. I think the most important job that I had as principal was really getting into teachers' classrooms, watching them teach a lesson from beginning to end, and then engaging in some of the, the best professional development that you can give. Really looking at how are kids learning in the classroom and what do they need, whether it be from the teacher, instructionally, or from us as a system to really address that. So teacher observation alone for us, our untenured folks do go through two full series of observation. And when you look at how we're currently structured administratively, to not put an assistant principal back in the building means you really won't have anybody focused on the management of the building because your principals are really tied up doing that kind of work. So if we don't put that position back, we're really going to leave a space where teachers are going to be calling for support with a student who maybe is, is violent or having a bad day, and there won't be a principal to be able to intervene in those situations. So I, I am not at a place right now, when I examine this position, where I could recommend to the board that we cut the position. I think we put the position back as it is. I think if it's something that we want to look at long-term budgetarily, there are some things I think we should consider administratively, possibly sharing. Your principal and assistant principal roles are not positions I would recommend that we share. So maybe we do begin to look at sharing with another district, some of the other positions. So I'm going to talk about director of curriculum for a second. When we brought director of curriculum instruction back, we actually brought it back and made it director of curriculum instruction, but also added the technology. And if you remember, we had a really lengthy conversation around, is that job title doable, right? Is that job title doable? So this evening, you watched both principals talk about the response to intervention plan. I can tell you that when I was principal and Michelle Meyer was director of curriculum and instruction, she presented on the RTI plan because that was hers to manage. When we readjusted our structure without a director of curriculum and instruction, we actually took that role and we, in this very room, and we dissected it. We said, okay, we no longer have that position, so who does this? And between the two principals, myself and Principal Meyer, the role of the director of curriculum was actually handed out, divvied up. So a lot of that work that the principals took on, I really have to leave with the principal, even though we've put a director of instruction back because we actually put it back with also director of technology. If we were going to make a change right now, I would say we have to reexamine our entire administrative structure, and I cannot do that in the month of August. I'm not opposed to looking at it. I think we continue to study it. I just know that kids deserve for us to have a solid year, and teachers need the support that they need to be successful in the classroom. We can put it back if we're going to pull something apart. I've had several conversations with Director Pete. I think in the end, if we were going to try to share something, we might try to create a space where we're sharing a director of curriculum instruction separate from a director of technology with another district, knowing that your director of curriculum instruction could still do what, only what Lindsay is going to do for us now, which is stay laser-like focused on our list, on our literacy initiative. So there's room, I think, for us to handle this budgetarily. I just don't think the solution is in an assistant principal. So my recommendation is that we post for the position, we hire for the position, and we continue to study our administrative structure in a strategic way.
You mentioned how, how behavior management is handled between the principal and assistant principal. What about all the other layers of support that are sort of built in? Like, is that going to be the responsibility? It feels like solely, is it, I don't want to say solely of the AP, but when there's a principal, an assistant principal, a counselor, a social worker, a behavior interventionist, school resource officers, classroom teachers, that's a lot of layers of support. Where, where is that best divvied up? And, and how can it serve the community with, you know, when there's all these people offering to support or with the ability to support a child's behavior? It's a tough sell to a lot of people, I think, to hear, oh, the assistant principal's there to help with behavior. Oh, and they see there's six other people.
Well, but there's definitely a difference between behavior and supporting a behavior in the moment versus actually addressing and handling the behavior. So that, that was one of the things I spotlighted when I did my cost-benefit analysis to the Board of Education. Just by regulation, an assistant principal can actually give consequences. You know, if we were to bring all of our counselors in here right now and ask our counselors, like if a child did something, let's say in the cafeteria and needs detention, do you want to be part of assigning detention? They're all going to say, absolutely not. Like counselors in general are not meant to be disciplinarians. So although they might respond in order to like de-escalate a situation, they don't follow back up with any kind of consequence for that behavior. So the lines, and when you're starting to think about them, the lines really are, what's the role and responsibility of the counselor? Our social worker is also shared. We have one social worker shared across the district. So what's the role of the social worker? If the social worker is helping a family, let's just, let's just family A, right? And some of the issues that they're having are very needs-based. And on top of supporting them with getting their, their electric turned back on, making sure that there's food within the home, you definitely can't have these same folks that are handling some of these other components assigning consequences or discipline in every way. I often said as a principal, like, when you have to give consequences to children, it's kind of like burning a bridge to the family. So I would burn bridges sometimes with having to make the tough decision of a consequence, where my counselors and my social worker are going to spend a lot of time building that bridge back, right? How do we get back and get the family to re-engage with us? So everyone does have a little bit of a different role in the way that they interact. And I would say, without giving you very specific examples, there's also times where the counselor should step right out of the way. That is no longer their job, and a principal or assistant principal should step in. You know, the role of the school resource officer, the way I view the role of the school resource officer is that person stands over there, right? When we're in the middle of any kind of thing having to do with children, I don't think their parents send them to school today thinking that they're going to engage with the police. So you've got to think about the SRO in terms of the SRO's role as if someone unwanted or unwelcome makes their way into our school, or some violent activity begins to happen, the SRO is going to intervene. But they are not intervening, nor should they in the day-to-day.
And those are important things for people to know.
100%.
Because we, you know, it's never been outlined for us.
So it's definitely, in, in this, like just listening to you all and some of your questions along, along the last couple of weeks, I've written a letter to the community. Like, I do think that some of what we should do is communicate out the roles that people have. We've got, we've built some, I'm going to call them like flow charts, like you'll see it even in our calendar, you know, chain of command, right? Which is a, I don't love, right? So instead of saying chain of command, like who do you call if? Right? So maybe we do have to do some role clarity, but the assistant principal is also able to evaluate staff. And so if you, if you don't have enough people to evaluate staff, we'll just go back to the model. I've got to take us back to when we did not have assistant principals because I was here and without one. I did all of the teacher evaluation. I also did all of the independent evaluations at the elementary school. So there were several days across the school year where I left the building and I went over to the elementary school and I did all of those evaluations. There were days that Dave Bolter left his building and came to my building to do the same. So in the end, we had the principals and we were maneuvering that. Michelle was the director of curriculum instruction, and she was doing just as many, if not more, walkthroughs as all the rest of us. So if we are to change our structure now, I would have to make it happen, I would have to give teacher evaluation to Mrs. Pete. But I, she's not working the same director of curriculum instruction job that Michelle worked. She's also handling all of our technology and our infrastructure and our security. So I just, it's not an easy, it's not an easy flip, right? If we're going to do that, we need to be very thoughtful and strategic about how we're going to do it. I'm not opposed, I do think we should always look at every position, always ask these same questions. I think that's our, that's our responsibility. I just don't see a path forward, not right now, without completely restructuring us, which I don't know how you do that in August.
You had sent that message clarifying the position and the benefits of the position to include the cost-benefit analysis. I think before the board, we all looked at that, thank you. The cost-benefit, I feel, is flawed, and I emailed today about that. It doesn't take into consideration a lot of variables between positions for the different ideas that you had had to solve this issue. And then reading through the, the roles of the assistant principal and the benefits of the district of having that position filled, I didn't feel like we were checking many of those boxes that we should have been realizing with that person, a serviceable person in that position. The staff retention was not great, student performance was not great. We've got community members coming to us saying the discipline issues are not being resolved to their satisfaction. And I guess, to give an analogy of welding, you know, I feel like we're at the point where we've got something that's maybe broken, and it's not perfect, and are we just lobbing more on top of that? Or do we, as the people in charge of making the decisions, need to do the job, grind the material out, and make a nice pass to fix it and then put more on it so that it's a solid fix? And I'm interested to hear your thoughts on that because we've, we've observed a lot of dissatisfaction with the status quo as it was. It's, I feel like it's hard to go, to Liz's point, it's hard to just add more when we haven't seen the results from that expense of that administrator. And I feel like that's the loudest thing that we've heard as board members from the community is there are so many admins. And granted, I appreciate Cam saying, we don't know what the behind-the-scenes looks like, and you've done a good job explaining that to us. community is, there are so many admins, and granted, I appreciate Cam saying, we don't know what the behind-the-scenes looks like, and you've done a good job explaining that to us. But at the same time, you know, we came up borrowing a lot from our reserves this year to close the budget gap. And if you're hiring a quality AP, you know, that could be a 30-year employee if everything works out well. And the last thing the district wants to do is cut somebody loose because the budget doesn't provide for that position. And so I would ask, you know, if you'd consider pausing that and exploring some of the other options that you laid out in your note to us.
I mean, in the grand scheme of it, right now, I can't pause on that. Like, I don't see the path very quickly forward for us to be able to remedy all the things that you've just said. So let me just address this portion. I would not expect us to hire an assistant principal and have them be a 30-year employee. Assistant principals really should be coming here, getting their land legs, and going and becoming a principal someplace else. So I understand with every employee that we hire and every employee that we tenure, right, there is that, that we could have you now forever. But I think, I think it would be okay, actually, if we decided in two years that we were going to restructure and do something different, if we're not seeing the bang for our buck in student achievement and being result-oriented, which I hope you're all sensing from me right now, even the way that the team is producing, that this is looking different. So I think you have to give us a minute to create a machine and really get a machine moving. Will I feel bad if in two years we say we don't have APs and we're doing something different? No. I mean, APs should be ready to apply for jobs. I can honestly tell you, and this is a brag, not just, not just on our administrative team, but on our teachers, on our kids, and certainly on this community. We went to our leadership retreat last week in Ellicottville as a region. I was, like, keeping people away from your administrators, right? They could be scooped up right this second, and I would let all of them to stay put, right? That is what the market looks like right now, so I don't think we have to, I don't think we have to feel bad about that. In fact, if we hire, and I can be very transparent, that we're going to continue to study this, right? So get your land legs, but keep your, keep your eyes set on a prize that's bigger than this moment, so that we're being fair to your point. But I, I would think that you're going to always have turnover in the assistant principalship. That's actually why some of the neighboring districts have rid themselves of APs, and they've actually created more principal positions. I'm not recommending that in this moment, right? But I do think that, you know, I would like to consider, if nothing else, looking at maybe the structure of an 11-month employee, like, maybe we change the job description. Not a 10-month employee, 20 days in the summer, but an 11-month employee. It's a job description we don't currently have, but I have examined some. You know, maybe we come back and we say, let's look at that. Now you're talking about a little bit of a, little bit of a cost break, not a huge cost break, but not a cost break that actually would prohibit work. And so in my cost-benefit analysis, when I talk about the difference between the contracts, your, the principals and assistant principals, sorry, guys, I call them on a Sunday and say, let's go, you know, 2 o'clock district office. They're all coming. No one's getting paid extra. No one. So we work different. Administrators work different. And you know what you're paying them when you set out to pay them. Whereas if we go with any of the other options that I laid out for you, you don't actually know what it's going to cost you in the end. Because in a teacher contract, everything they do beyond 3 o'clock is paid by the hour at curriculum rate. So you would have to basically build for yourself in your cost-benefit analysis, which is a little bit challenging for me to do in this moment. I would have to track the elementary school and say, every single time we run an event, Principal Meyer, can you handle this event by yourself? Or what happens if you begin to change the structure of your admin team where you say, Mr. Ricardo, you have to be present at an elementary event now too because we need the support? Well, the minute we start transferring work, and it's just, it's, the reality of it sounds icky, especially when you're talking about administrators, but they also have a contract, right? So if we start changing the nature of their job, now they can actually also come to the table and say, we're going to impact bargain. So there's a lot of things in here that we have to be very cognizant of so that we don't make a decision now that isn't good for us in the long term. But I will not feel bad if an assistant principal leaves us in two years or we change our structure in two years, because I would expect that working alongside us, they're going to be ready. They're going to be ready. A superintendent someplace else will pick them up fast. They spent time in Caledonian Mumford. That's, I believe that about not just our administrative team, but how our school functions, that they will have gotten one of the best experiences ever and take that with them wherever they go.
Any other questions concerning comments? We are going to, there's no old business, so we are going to move on to new business, our capital project tour. This is something new that we're doing this year that Becky has facilitated, and we have a team here to walk us through that tour. Dr. Chanel, I'm going to have you speak on that real quick before we leave and sort of what that's going to look like.
Absolutely. So there's two things about this process. So we are going to adjourn the meeting, but members of the public that are here, the meeting isn't stopping. We're just adjourning so that we can go take a tour, and you're welcome to join us on our tour.
Oh, literally touring.
Yes, we are literally touring. We are going to talk this evening about some pretty big additions, and so I thought, you haven't toured yet, it's a good time for us to tour so that you guys really stay in the thick of the decision-making that's happening around the capital project. So I did give each member of the Board of Education, you have a tablet and you have a pen. Members of the community, you're welcome to join us. The one thing I'm going to ask is that to keep our tour kind of moving along and to make sure that we do our business on record, is that you take notes of questions that you might have while we're touring, and let's not ask too many of the questions there because obviously we're not going to be on camera. So if you just kind of hold your questions for what you have, then when we get back here and we go back on camera, you're going to have an opportunity to ask the questions of our construction team. That way, the community will also be able to hear the questions that you all asked. So I would say, I've organized this in a way that's good for TV. So if you have just scripted your notes, plus it should keep our tour kind of quick. Let me introduce, let me just introduce Kevin and Jeff, and then you guys can introduce the rest of your team, and that way everyone knows who you all are, and then we'll begin the tour. So Kevin Donahue.
Sure. Good evening, everybody, and hi. Kevin Donahue, Vice President of Campus Construction. Mike Farrari is our Senior PM, running the project alongside of Jeremy Wilson and our internist Sawyer. So thank you for having us, and we're glad to do the tour.
One thing before you step away, you did tell me tonight that because construction is not active, that we are not putting on hard hats.
We did not. We've safened everything up and cleaned up.
Thank you.
There's no red work. We don't need hard hats tonight.
Thank you. Jeff, go ahead.
Hi. Yeah, Jeff Robbins, a principal with Hunt, and Shannon Davis is here. She's your project manager on the job. It's just two of us, so.
All right. So we are going to do the...
I'm going to adjourn the meeting, and then we'll come back after our tour, probably in about 45 minutes. Community's welcome to come.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, we're, she's getting to it.
Resolved that the Board of Education adjourned to the regular board meeting.
Give us about 45 minutes, I would say.
In about 45 minutes to tour the campus for the capital project tour. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion's carried, and we will be back. Resolved that the Board of Education return to the regular session at 7:45 PM. May I have a motion, please?
Yep.
A second?
Second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion's carried. We're going to have Hunt and Campus continue their presentation. Thank you for that tour, and thank you for staying on time.
Yeah. So we can, we can start with just, in general, questions that the board might have of Campus or Hunt, and then we'll start talking about the change orders before we move into the next round of business.
Yeah.
The parking lot by the elementary school, will the stripes, the spots be easier to use than they have been?
I'm asking if they'll be straight or diagonal.
If they'll be straight and if they'll be wide enough, because there's like SUVs and vans, you pull in there, and it is, you know, one is always over the line and you're losing spots and...
I want to say we designed to the standard, which is nine by 18. I don't know what you had before.
I, I don't know. Whatever they were, they...
They were tiny.
Pretty tiny. More than one door to open.
Yeah, the new nine by 10 is usually standard size. That's what they are. But if the question is, are they diagonal or straight, are you remember?
I don't remember if they're straight or angled.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure they're diagonal.
I think so, too.
Those are easier to get in.
Yes, I'm pretty sure.
With that, with...
I'll double-check it and make sure you know.
So that would actually, a 45 degree would make it easier to get in, huh?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. You're just, all I can think is, oh, my gosh. You don't have any space to go in these spots now. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Is there any other questions?
Excellent. All right. Well, I guess we talk about, you want to just talk about the boilers and the windows, and then you guys can be done, and we'll move on through resolution.
So as we've been talking about, and Dr. Chanel brought it up earlier in the meeting, the unallocated funds. So back in January, when we opened bids, prices came in roughly a little over $1.5 million under our estimated budget, which put the district in a pretty good spot to look at making enhancements to the project, doing additional work. The money has been approved to spend. The prices came in cheaper, so now we can kind of go back to the board and look at, okay, what do we need? What are our needs? So our first step as a team over the last four months was to regroup and revisit our list of priorities that we talked about early on at the job, and decided on two scopes of work. These two scopes of work were included in the project early on, but during the value engineering process, removed for budget concerns. And that would be replacement of the west wing windows in the elementary building? Excuse me, sorry. And replacing the high school boilers, all five of them in the high school. So we set out to price this, we sent out an RFP, we vetted the pricing, and then we approached the State Education Department. The reason being, because of the dollar value, we wanted to make sure that we could issue this work or process these as a change order. And the argument, but the reasoning would be to save the district on additional costs to mobilize an additional contractor to the site, also the timeframe that it would take to go through another bidding process. It just didn't fit into our overall construction schedule. So we heard back from the State Education Department, and they agreed that it would be in the district's best interest to process these as a change order and utilize the labor we have on site currently. So that leads us to today. So the windows that we're talking about are the, let's see if I can say this correctly, we're talking about the west wing of the elementary building, the street side, the two-story section. In the project currently is all of the windows that face the street. So that'd be the west side of the west wing, including the stairwells. The two stairwells, there are tall windows in there, those are getting replaced as well. What we're looking to do is replace the windows on the opposite side of that wing, so the east side of the west wing. So the whole, the old west wing now would get new windows in this project. That would, they were all replaced at the same time in the 90s, so they're all the same vintage. Replacing them all now because the funds are available will align in aesthetics, so we know they're all going to look the same because we're buying them all at the same time. And then also lifecycle consistency. So again, in another however many years, when we're talking about window replacements, they're all going to be kind of in the same condition and can be addressed as a group, if needed. That's the windows. The total cost for that was $481,000, $481,660. The second change order we're here to get approval for was the boilers in the high school. The original scope of this project was to replace, like we talked about, the boilers in the elementary school, and to address some issues with high school boilers that the district's been experiencing, we're going to utilize a boiler from the elementary school over in the high school, swap it out. When we started this process, one of our first thoughts was, why don't we just replace the boilers? They're nearing the end of their life. It was part of the original conversation of this project, and if we have the opportunity to replace them, make them all new at the same time, why reuse an old boiler over there? So that is, that leads us to today where we're recommending that the district move forward with these two change orders. Do you have any questions?
Will, go ahead, John.
I think it's a wonderful idea. I've been here forever, but I've thought that the, let's just say, the likelihood of the moved boiler across campus just being a wonderful boiler when it's one below zero for three straight days, it's just, I mean, it's, now is the time. I mean, I'm impressed, I'm impressed that we can do it. First of all, I'm impressed with state, the people you call.
The state department. I heard your opinion on that.
Quick and agreeable, which is common sense. I'm, I'm very excited about it. This is...
Us, too, because it allows us to keep moving forward and utilize the funds that you guys have said, yes, go ahead and put into our buildings. So we're, we're still, as Dr. Chanel said on the tour a couple of times, we, we still have some money to use. This, these two change orders, our potential change orders, total about just under $1 million. That leaves us, in the unallocated funds that were, we realized on bid day, just over $600,000 left, and that's on top of our construction contingency that's already in place. So we're in a good spot, and there's still some work to do. The tile finish is over there, something we're talking about, but then the, our goal, our task now is going to be to identify some other needs here, and we'll probably be back at some point to talk to you about those.
Couple of questions I had. What's the lead time on those windows? And what's the classroom impact? When are we going to be working on them?
Good question. Current schedule is to start the window replacements this fall. We have a swing space in the building, an empty classroom. Working in one room, say there's, we're talking about a classroom or an office, there's typically one or two windows, should take one or two days to get in and out of that room. So they would pull a window out, put a new window in, or tempt the window in, put the window in the next day, and then move on to the next one. So for the new windows we're talking about, if this does get approved, we send the approval back, the order gets placed, Pella Windows has already come and done all their measurements to get ahead of the gate. So that would, the lead time is actually on this?
I don't know.
Yeah, the number of weeks, I can find out, but it does line us up to get into the additional windows we're talking about when we're done with the, for the base bid windows that we're working on right now, or that we will be starting in the fall.
And fall might align with break, right? We have several breaks.
There are several breaks we can utilize to gain time, and I'm actually eyeing next summer for some, some of this new window work that does go through.
Yeah, because it'd be a tough juggling act with the kids in the buildings and the classroom next door.
Yes.
I appreciate that.
I think anytime we can use breaks or, you know, time that the students aren't here is obviously what we prefer.
Us, too. Yes. We can do a lot more a lot faster that way.
And then one other question. Are we able to, if there is funds available, include anything with the thermostats in the high school in this project, or is that still going to be something that's just standalone? I know we've talked about it a little bit.
So we do currently have controls work in the project for the spaces we're touching, you know, the ones we look at. Also, the main office, which we didn't look at, that is going to be starting up, the high school main office, come this winter. For all their controls outside of that, that is, that is something we can talk about. It's something we can bring onto the table because we are doing that work in this project, and I, and I believe that it might, the State Education Department might agree that it does align with the scope of work that was voted on here.
Michael, I can tell you about where the board meetings usually are, because it's always 90 degrees in there. Is that an example?
No. So I don't know anything about the way it works, but I know that you've talked to us before...
Capital Outlay Project.
About how it's an air control system, and there's leaks in the lines, and it's just an issue. And we're trying to go with...
Oh, that'd be great.
To get updated.
The other thing I'd like to look at with the team is some of the safety features at the elementary school. Just in nature, when you think about the 98 building, like I've been very accustomed to being over in the 98 building, where all of those fire doors are really set up in a way that allow quite a bit of containment. And so, we push that lockdown button, and there's just a lot of containment that can happen. I think we need to examine some of the, some of the areas of the elementary school and really ask ourselves, could we add some more containment? I definitely see some areas there that I would like to address. So, I also want to look at some of the safety component and say, now might be the time to address the addition of some fire doors, trying to create a few more areas that, just for our own security, that once you're in, you're not just in, you're in and kind of trapped until you're in another time, kind of thing. So, they're good mitigation strategies, and I'd like to see us really examine that. The board has also had, we've had some concerns just around the doors and their safety. There are a few doors over at the elementary school that also, you know, swell, and there are things that we could be doing that might, would be beneficial to us, whether it's the change out of a door, or the addition of some technology to the doors to add some alarms to the strike themselves. Like, there's some things I've been researching that the team, I'm ready to stand in some of the spaces at the elementary school and talk a little bit about what those upgrades might look like while we're already in that building, with some of those things pulled apart.
And the key here is keeping the framework that we're talking about within the approved scope of the referendum. So, the examples you just gave are perfect already in this job. We can scale them up if needed, if that was what was decided.
Appreciate the presentation. Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we're going to move on to number two, approval of change order for middle school, high school boilers. Whereas, the Board of Education of the Caledonian Mountford Central School District is undertaking a capital improvement project known as the 2025-2026 Capital Project. And whereas, the board has an existing contract with Maza Mechanical Services dated February 12th, 2025 for mechanical work. And whereas, certain changes to the contract are now being implemented due to availability of unallocated project funds. And whereas, the district's architect, architect and construction manager, hunt engineers in campus construction, has reviewed and recommended for approval and proposed change, which is detailed in change order number 103-02. Whereas, this change order will result in a net increase to the contract sum in the amount of $481,660. Now, therefore, be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves capital change order number 103-02 to the contract with Maza Mechanical Services for the 2025-2026 Capital Project, resulting in a net increase to the contract in the amount of $481,660, which adjusts the total contract sum to $1,921,311. And be it further resolved that the superintendent is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate this change order. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
A second?
Yep.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. We're going to move on to number three, approval of change order for elementary windows. Whereas, the Board of Education of the Caledonian Mountford Central School District is undertaking a capital improvement project known as the 2025-2026 Capital Project. And whereas, the board has an existing contract with Algeir Construction Corp. dated February 12th, 2025 for general trades work. And whereas, certain changes to the contract are now being implemented due to availability of unallocated project funds. And whereas, the district architect and construction manager, hunt engineers in campus construction, has reviewed and recommended for approval the proposed change, which is detailed in change order number 101-02. And whereas, this change order will result in a net increase to the contract sum in the amount of $405,092. Now, therefore, be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves change order number 101-02 to the contract with Algeir Construction Group for the 2025-2026 Capital Project, resulting in a net increase to the contract in the amount of $405,092, which adjusts the total sum to $4,511,089. Be it further resolved that the superintendent is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate this change order. May I have a motion, please?
Yep.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is also carried. Number four, school bus intermunicipal cooperative agreement. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved intermunicipal cooperative agreement with BOSI's General Transportation regarding reciprocal loaning of school buses for the 2025-2026 school year per attached resolution. May I have a motion, please?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Number five, certification of evaluators and lead evaluators. Whereas, the Education Law Section 3012-D and Subpart 30-2 of the Regulations of the Commission of Education require that administrators receive specific training as a condition of performing teacher and principal evaluations pursuant to this section and subpart. And whereas, the administrators so trained are eligible to be designated by the board as evaluators and lead evaluators, thereby authorizing the performance of evaluations pursuant to that section and subpart. And whereas, certain partnership administrators have received the required training. Now, therefore, be it resolved pursuant to Education Law 3012-C and Sections 30-2.2 and 30-2.9 of the Regulations of the Commissioner, that the following partnership administrators are certified as evaluators and lead evaluators. Dr. Rebecca Chanel, Mrs. Morgan Marcello, Dr. Tim, oh geez, Mr. Tim McCardle, Mrs. Megan Rogers, Mrs. Michelle Myers, Mrs. Megan Rogers, I will slow down. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I will just say, this is training that we have to do every year to get recertified to do our teacher certification, or teacher evaluation, I'm sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Next, we're going to talk about a transfer to reserve funds. Dr. Chanel, I'm going to let you speak briefly before I activate that.
Certainly, so, every year, we do have to make sure that we give this statement, that when we get to the end of the year for our audit purposes, that this is how we're going to handle our money towards the end of the school year. So, we are going to do our 4% carryover, and then any budget surplus will go into reserves, and that's a statement that you're making, and you're making that so that we can begin our audit process. Still, when we get to the end of that audit and we're ready to make deposits into the reserves, you will be voting to help to decide where that money goes. So, this is just the first part of this, which is to close out our books.
Transfer to reserve funds. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, pre-authorize any transfers which may be necessary in connection with a fiscal year and closing of the district books to ensure compliance with Section 1318 of the Real Property Tax Law. In the event that there is a budget surplus that is greater than what we are able to utilize in our appropriated fund balance, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education take action to authorize transfers to approved reserve funds, including the appropriation of fund balance and reserve contained in the voter-approved 2025-2026 budget. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Number seven, cooperative bid resolution. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved the authorization to participate in the following cooperative bids for the 2026-2027 school year. The bids will be coordinated by Genesee Livingston Stuben, Wyoming, BOSI's during the 2025-2026 school year as listed. May I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Number eight, annual approval of district-wide emergency response plans. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved the project Save Schools for the 2025-2026 per Commissioners' Regulation 155.17. May I have a motion, please?
Make it.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Number nine, annual approval of elementary, middle, high school building emergency response plans. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved the project Save Elementary, Middle, High School Building Emergency Response Plans for the 2025-2026 school year per Commissioners' Regulation 155.17. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
Second?
Yep.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Number 10, number 10, we're going to go through our first reading of board policies. Dr. Chanel's going to speak to them. Three of them are, well, two of them are new, I think.
Thank you, you guys.
Oh, yeah.
Now's a good time.
That was a good time. Okay, so, first, let's talk about the use of internet-enabled devices during the school year, so, policy number 7316. So, this is new and part of the governor's budget. What I will say is what I've been communicating with families is that for us here at Caledonian Mountford, we really have not allowed kids to have their cellphones out during instruction. So, the largest change that we're really going to see is that our students, our incoming kids, grades 10 through 12, are now going to have to keep their cellphones in their locker throughout the school day. For the rest of the students in our district, this is not, this is not really a change for them. They've not been allowed to carry their cellphones on their person all the way through grade eight. The eighth graders will tell you that they were looking forward to ninth day to keep their phone, and now they're mourning, but we do, like, just in terms of the way in which we're communicating this, please know that from my angle, this really isn't about what the governor said in the governor's budget. This is actually about what we know to be true, and we know that children are really struggling with their addiction to cellphones and internet-connected devices, and we're going to do our part here at school. I do think it makes the teachers' job a little bit easier across the high school. A lot of teachers would actually have the children turn their phones in at the beginning of class, just to try to help keep the distractions from the classroom. So, one last thing now for the teachers to have to do as the kids are transitioning. I'm sure we'll hit some bumps in the road. We've been doing some parent communication through Parent Square. I'm going to put out another message tomorrow. We are hosting on Thursday a session through CASA. They're coming to talk about parenting kids with anxiety. And so, just in general, if you're, if you have children that are experiencing this idea of being without my cellphone is going to be hard, we're offering a couple parenting classes, and we're going to try to do that a little bit throughout the fall to support families. My next round of communication to parents will actually be around some of the things you could begin doing at home right now to try to help your children transition to living the full day without a device. I do think if parents partner with us now, the pain will be a little bit less, but I'm sure that they're going to experience some of the same concerns that we have. Districts that did this ahead of the law, or the rule kind of changing, experienced a lot of absenteeism. And so, I think just in, in general, we kind of have a sense, in working with our counseling team, who the kids are that are going to struggle the most to maybe give up their phone. Children that suffer with anxiety also accommodate their anxiety by communicating with their parents a lot throughout the day on their cellphones. So, we know that some kids are going to need support from us that's beyond, I want to play a video game, or I just want to check my social media, like, we're, so, we're busy looking at all of that. So, for us, this policy is going to be exactly what you saw in our code of conduct. Our change was minimal. We had to draw one line through and add a little bit of language. So, I anticipate the kids struggling with it, but we're going to survive it, right? We got this, we got this. Next up is artificial intelligence, policy 5840. As Mrs. Pete mentioned, we did buy Gemini, so, we, we're a Google school, so we use a full suite of Google tools. Last year, it was definitely our push administratively. You cannot teach children how to use artificial intelligence if you don't know how to use artificial intelligence. So, we wanted to make sure that we open that up for our teachers. We did quite a bit of staff development last year around artificial intelligence, and I think all of us are starting to get pretty good at using it ourselves. I'm going to liken it to going back when Google first became a thing, as I date myself. As an English teacher, like, I had to teach children how to use a Google search, right? How to use search terms to really get back what you want versus this whole big world. Artificial intelligence, I would say, is a lot the same, but requires a language now that's so much more precise than using the word "and" or the word "or" in a Google search to try to get your terms there. So, I would say, the more specific you can be when you're talking to artificial intelligence, the better your initial product is. I think it has a lot of potential for being able to help kids put an essay in and actually get a round of feedback based on a rubric before the teacher ever sees it. Like, there's a lot of interactive space here that artificial intelligence can actually help our kids with. We changed our code of conduct last year, and we added a phrase that artificial intelligence cannot be used to replace your thinking. So, I would say to you, we now have to teach kids how to do that, if we really want to help them maximize artificial intelligence. If we're using it at home, now let's make sure they really know how to use it, and when it is benefiting them as learners, and when it is detracting from their ability to learn. So, our teachers agreed. The policy actually gave us two options. We could either say, artificial intelligence is not allowed at all, or that we were going to teach artificial intelligence. Our teachers actually have slated to teach the use of artificial intelligence. So, I just want to thank Mrs. Pete for engaging with our faculty to make sure that we are hearing their voices loud and clear, and advising the policy committee on what the faculty was hoping for in that particular policy. So, thank you for the support. The next one up is policy number 5685. This will be the second time I've, I used to say, when superintendents say unfunded mandates, I would like cringe. I totally get it now. It's vastly different from even it ever was before. So, to all the administrators in the galley over there, it's actually a thing, it's a real thing. This, for me, is one of those unfunded mandates. So, we now have to pay very close attention to the heat inside classrooms. We tried to put air conditioning into this capital project. You're talking about upwards, close to $5 million to do that. And that's, that's not really taking into account that once you start opening the walls over at the elementary school, you're likely going to find asbestos, and how do you account for all the unknowns in that? So, that was kind of base price. It came off this capital project as quickly as it went on, but it definitely was examined because we knew that this law was coming. So, basically, what we now know, the law requires that if a classroom reaches 88 degrees in instructional space, it actually has to be evacuated. So, you know that in June, we had a couple of really hot days in a row, and for me, that was stellar, because it was time to test our systems. With our mitigation strategies, with the recommendations that we have, close your windows, close the blinds, turn off your lights, use a fan, how'd we do? Not well, not well. So, I moved us to half-days of instruction based on the heat index, which I was able to do in advance, but when we watched the building, I, I can't tell you how this will impact us. Because it was the last week in June, I would say, there weren't high school kids in the building, so it was easy for us to take all of the exams and move everything downstairs where it stayed cooler longer. It still started to reach temperature across those couple of hot days, but stayed cooler longer. We could also put all of our regents exams into rooms that had air conditioning. So, we were able to mitigate over there because half the population was in the building. At the elementary level, it was the full population. So, the areas that are air-conditioned, the library, the auditorium, the, Mrs. Meyer, Principal Meyer, created a space in the auditorium for teachers to bring kids down for breaks. So, we brought them down for breaks. They were able to come down and get a break, and then go back to class and try to push through the day. We definitely would have met in several classrooms on the second floor by 7:30 on that Tuesday. We would have been closing school over heat. I would not have had a mitigation strategy. So, just in general, this law is now requiring that when we reach 82, we start to monitor the classroom, and we have to mitigate. And so, when Brennan and I examined this data set, we would spend three-quarters of the month of June, and probably all of September, our, it would almost be like, you know, those days where we're wondering, is school going to get canceled because of the snow? We would be mitigating every day, like, can we use this classroom? For how much longer will we be able to be in here? So, Brennan has examined the data, he's looked at the data coming out of our classrooms. I have pictures to show you. I mean, this is hard to see. I'll pass this, I'll pass that that way, and this, you guys can have. Like, just in general, what this is going to show you, just a quick glance, we have the temperatures of every single classroom on our console. So, we're actually able to see every single classroom space and what the temperature is. When we start to reach that threshold of 82, we start to get text messages and emails, both myself and Brennan and Richie, our director of facilities, we start to get messages that the classrooms, that the heat index is climbing in there. When it reaches the 88, we actually get another message telling us that we, we actually have, we've reached that threshold and we have to evacuate. So, across those days in June, when you couple several hot days in a row where the nighttime temperatures don't drop, we don't have mitigation strategies. We don't have them. Now, this past week, we watched it, last week, it was hot during the day, cool by night, our mitigation strategies would have worked, we would have got ourselves. But you string a couple of hot days and nights where the temperature doesn't drop, and you'd be canceling school. In September and October, you don't want to be bringing kids down to the auditorium to watch a Disney movie. You want to be teaching, reading a map. So, with this new policy, unfunded mandate, we have purchased air conditioning units to make sure that we have real mitigation strategies to use when we start to see the temperatures climbing. My goal would be not to fight the battle of whose classroom is being mitigated and whose is not. So, I definitely have a slated right now to be able to handle every single classroom for every single teacher and student, to make sure that we are not borrowing an air conditioner from one place to drop the temperature in someplace else. It, almost the has and have-nots around whether or not we can breathe in here today. So, just know that for me, this is an unfunded mandate. What will the cost for us be? We're going to monitor it this school year. We're going to have to see what happens to our electric bill if we're running air conditioning. We're going to have to see what happens to our electric bill if we're running air conditioning. My goal right now is to create windows or seasons of time where you'll be allowed to have your air conditioner. And I think probably you're looking at those first couple of weeks in September and then the air conditioning units will not be allowed to be used. And then, we start to get into, you know, April and May, probably right around May, we want to start saying, "Okay, you'll be allowed to use them from, from this date to this date." Other than that, you're talking about losing instructional time over heat.
Does the infrastructure allow that much power draw?
It does.
And then, if, say you have to close for a heat day, does that count against a tally like a snow day?
It does.
So, if you have five snow days already, you have to make up the heat days somewhere?
It does.
Of course it does.
Yes, it does. Yes, it does. So, when you think about that from a contractual standpoint, our teachers work one-hundred-and-eighty-six days. You know, if you started to tack in, even if you said, "We're going to put in more days and elongate the school year," now you're, now you're negotiating a contract. So, it's going to be cheaper for us to put some air conditioning units in as short-term mitigation strategies during particular seasons, uh, of the school year than it is for us to lose instructional time or have to reopen extending a school year.
Is campus consulting on that one?
With the air conditioning units? They are.
Good.
They are. There's, once they're on our property doing any sort of work for us, they're being asked everything that we are thinking. So, yes. And last, that last policy, I apologize, there's one more there. Uh, when you looked at that policy, there was just one sentence. There's a one-sentence update, um, in there. It's nothing substantial, but it must have had an impact at some point for Child Protective Services and so they're asking for us to update. So, that component of your policy is updated.
Thank you, Dr. Chanel.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
I had a question I did on the cellphone.
Oh, yes.
Policy. Um, it applies to students only, not faculty and staff? Why is that? Because if we're teaching by example, if a teacher's up in their, in the front of the classroom on their phones, "Oh, that doesn't really, you know..."
Yeah, same, same sort of construct. Our faculty handbook actually says that teachers cannot have their cellphones out. So, just in general, like, what I would say is when teachers are on their cellphone in their classroom, typically what I would hear from a teacher is, "Hey, Becky, just so you know, my mom is having surgery today, so like, if you see my phone out, like, I'm just monitoring a family issue." Uh, but I couldn't agree with you more. We had a staff development session in here a couple of weeks ago with the administrative team and our PPS team and I made them turn their phones in in the back. Let's just feel it, right? Because in the end, our habits also have to change. I couldn't agree with you more. I'm not going to be the superintendent that's on the phone when kids in the building can't have their phone. Like, we have to change our habits too.
And we see the teachers, you know, they take pictures of their classes doing activities. Like, where, where does that line? It's kind of fuzzy. It's like, "Okay, my class is out in the outdoor classroom, I take some pictures and share with the parents on Parent Square, but I can't use my phone to do that because we're not allowed to use our phones during the day."
Yeah.
It's, you know, I imagine it's kind of a tricky...
It, it'll be a little bit tricky, but I also think, like, life is full of rules, right? And so, I think as long as teachers are doing a really good job at saying to kids, like, I'm, I mean, at the elementary school, they're not really going to have to talk about it much. Their practice isn't going to change. The kids have been used to not having phones. The teachers have pulled their phones out to take pictures and communicate that back about their class. Really where the challenge is going to kick in is your ten, eleven, and twelve. And to be very rational with them as educators around the difference between the rules, I would argue with you that we probably do that every single day with things that we're expecting of them inside the classroom. Or kids will say, "Well, so-and-so lets us do that." Well, you're in my classroom now, all right? So, I think some of that will just be teachers needing, and prin- and principals, I'm saying it for all of us, and myself included, I don't anticipate being in a classroom with my cellphone when kids are being told to keep theirs away. So, you, you should actually see now every adult thinking the same thing. We must model the way if this is what the expectation is. I couldn't agree with you more.
Thank you.
We struggled a little bit giving our phones up. I didn't. It was hard. We're used to being, people can reach us twenty-four-seven.
Yep.
And it felt like, I remember saying to the team, "Tell your secretaries, we're going to be over in district office. We have two-way radios. There's a way to get us if there's an emergency." Also, your secretary would have to call Mrs. Booth and say, "I need to pull you from a meeting." Well, imagine that everyone is rethinking, right? How much, I would have been texting you during your meeting. How much are you actually paying attention to what's happening in the meeting? Because this is happening in the building, right? We're pretty distracted. Now, it's like, am I calling Mrs. Booth and interrupting a meeting? The Dr. Chanel's having a district office? I don't know that it's that important, right? So, I do think it's going to recalibrate, it'll recalibrate all of us. We felt it.
Aren't parents having problems with it up to? Because they're, they're used to communicating with their kids during the day.
I mean, if you ask the team right now, the team would tell you that Dr. Chanel wants to know how she communicates little silly things to Austin without having to call the office, right? So, I definitely communicate with Austin during the day. Or I would send a text that says, "Hey, Dad dropped your sneakers off in your car. Don't look for me after school." Right? So, like, little things that I would never want to bother Mrs. Murdock with, I would have just sent them. So, how do we facilitate that kind of communication? Uh, we've talked about maybe for our ten-through-twelve graders, opening up their email so that parents could email back and forth with kids. We, we're, we're breathing deeply because if we're going to do that, we have to be ready to actually teach our children about phishing, right? We get a lot of phishing attacks in our email and we've trained our teachers. And our teachers go through a lot of training. So, if you open up student email and then they don't recognize a phishing attempt, but they're the reason something got through to our server, right? So, we have to figure out, first of all, they should learn that. But where are we going to teach it? And we have to teach it before we open it.
Can it just be opened? Can, like, one, one email address be assigned open for each child instead of, like, say, "Okay, it'll be open, but it will only be open for your moms and your dads."
I ask the same thing.
Instead of just the world. Really?
Because I wanted to only allow the emails that are connected to the children in schools, right? You can't do it by u- it's, the backend basically is set up by user group. So, we say, "You're students," and we can actually say, "You're grade." Like, we could do students by grade and give them different permissions, but you can't say, "We're opening email, but only to the following..."
To the three addresses.
What we have now is we're opening email, but you can only, kids can email anybody that's cal-mom.org, but not outside of our domain.
Right.
So, we have to balance parents wanting to have the smaller communication with, we have to train that or it opens our whole system up and we're, we've got to be careful. We have a lot of information that we don't want out and about.
So, this is the first read, reading of these board policies, so there's no action required tonight. So, in the coming weeks, um, if you review it, see further questions, please reach out to Dr. Chanel so she can get them answered. Um, at our next meeting, we'll, we'll be moving to adopt the changes.
Can I just say one more thing? So, if you're hearing on the news, the board really wanted all these policies done, right? So, she, in terms of that, the language coming out from period one, we didn't get on time to move this any faster. Per our board policy, we do two reads, right? Some boards will just show up and they've, they've talked about the policy and they've decided and now they're just going to vote on it. They don't have two reads. That's our policy for two reads, right? So, what we were allowed to do in order to meet the demand was to load a policy that's in draft, knowing that I can always come back and change the draft. So, please note, we did not miss any deadlines, um, in terms of reporting out at the state. Our stuff is just marked in draft.
May I ask one other question?
Of course.
Okay, the, the AI, uh, you've actually surprised me because, you know, I would be thinking old-school, you know, learn from a book, learn from whatever. And, you know, at that, like, college level, I'm used to the idea that college professors are like, you know, they're trying to identify where kids have used AI to write their essays. And now, you're saying that they are teaching that.
Well, you have to teach how to use artificial intelligence. I don't suggest anybody uses artificial intelligence to write their essay. But I, I could demonstrate for you right now that I could write an essay that using artificial intelligence would be pretty well-done.
Oh, yeah. Well, we, we've seen those demonstrations on TV.
Yeah, but data in, but data in, data in, data out. And so, even if you try to create an essay using artificial intelligence, you still have to tell it what you want it to do. So, you're very much the driver if you're going to get a good piece of information. I personally see nothing wrong with using it to get my first draft and then I clean my first dra- I take that first draft to the next level with my own thinking. If we don't teach that to kids, they won't survive in the next wave. Like, imagine if we'd never taught Google search, right? So, like, we do battle with, the world is, it's a changing place and someone has to teach it. So...
I mean, I can understand that part. I, I'm just, I'm just surprised.
I upload documents and ask Gemini to find all of the grammar mechanics issues. And it will identify anything it suggests I should change. Like, it's my first read. My first read on anything I produce right now is to have it check me. Like, why would I not? So, I just think about that from a teacher standpoint, obviously as an English teacher, right? Like, the things that I have to spend my time on in terms of giving kids feedback, they could learn how to get that feedback in another way so that my feedback is actually just on content and deep thinking. Freezes you up to get to the real stuff. Like, there's, to me, there's so much potential in it. But you're correct. If used, if used poorly...
It's plag- well, you know, is it plagiarism? That's, I mean, that's...
Yeah, I can create something using artificial intelligence and you can go in and try to create the same thing and it's not going to give you what it gave me. It mimics my voice and my tone and everything is actually really creepy. It's learning me. Gemini is learning me. I basically have a little personal assistant that supports me in my construction of first draft.
The library in town is having, like, two sessions coming up if you have...
I saw, one was today, wasn't it?
I, I couldn't remember.
And it was during AI for seniors?
Yeah. Just so, like, if you're...
Was Chris Harris teaching it?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll talk to him about the title. But if we don't teach it, the jobs of tomorrow are going to require that the kids understand how to harness the power of artificial intelligence and you'll continue to create the haves and have-nots. It's, it's going to be a new form of literacy and we're going to have to teach it.
Thank you, Dr. Chanel.
You're welcome.
Um, we're going to move on to number eleven. Uh, as long as everybody had their concerns, questions, answers. Yes. Resolution to approve breakfast and lunch prices resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent. Approve the school breakfast and lunch prices for the 2025-2026 school year as follows. Breakfast, K-5, two dollars, um, two dollars, six, twelve. Lunch, three dollars, K-5, and three-ten. These are, these are the same as last year.
They are the same as last year and this does not negate the fact that all our breakfasts are, and lunches are free to all. But we do have to set our lunch prices.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, there's, there's no one giving anybody four bucks and the lady trying to get ninety cents back.
Just if they want double lunches, right? So, the first lunch is free, the second lunch, if you want a double lunch, you are paying for it. So, we have to have, we have to have a price that we set.
And à la carte items.
And à la carte items we also charge for.
It's all cashless though, right?
Yes.
But we're making out having it be a little, the price a little bit higher.
Well, we didn't actually increase the price this year, but yes.
Are you wanting to lower it to three dollars because that's all you have?
Yes, no, I don't want to do that. Yes, yes.
Yes.
Plus, we get reimbursed at the rate that we set.
That's what I was feeling.
Yeah, that was, I, I, I knew what you were asking. Thank you, Mr. Bigford.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Number twelve, sale and disposal of school district property resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent. Award the bid for miscellaneous items to the highest bidders from Auctions International website per board policy five-two-five-zero. Sale and disposal of school district property. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Approval of elevator maintenance of Buffalo contract resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent. Approve the contract with ACE Elevator Inspection Corps to perform pressure relief tests on passenger elevators during the 2025-2026 school year. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Fourteen, approval of field turf contract resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent. Approve the contract with field turf for maintenance services during the 2025-2026 school year. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Number fifteen, approval of building condition survey contract resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent. Approve the building condition survey contract for the 2025-2026 school year. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Hunt will be doing his work.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Adoption of textbook resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the textbook committee. Approve the adoption of the recommended textbook, History Alive: The United States Through Industrialization and Through Modern Times, Second Edition by Teach-TCI. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, we thought it was, looked like a good book. So, and I, I was very, uh, taken by the new teacher that you had. She was really cool.
Isn't she great?
Yeah.
Who's that?
Um, her name is Samantha. She's starting new for us, taking over some of my green...
Fantastic. Yeah, she was very enthusiastic. And she had u- she had used this textbook.
Okay.
And so, she was quite familiar with how it all worked and, and it wasn't all jazzed up inside. It looked like it was easy to read.
Very literacy-based too. Lot of text exposure, a lot of writing, which is exactly what we want. It's exciting.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Number seventeen, approval of professional learning plan resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent. Approve the professional learning plan for the 2025-2026 school year. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Any opposed? Motion is carried. Eighteen, approval of response to intervention plan. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent. Approve the response to intervention plan for the 2025-2026 school year. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Number nineteen, approval of special ed district plan 2024-2026 school years. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent. Approve the updates to the special education district plan for the 2025-2026 school year. Just for clarification, Dr. Chanel, that's next school year, not 2024.
No, the special ed plan, that's its range. The plan itself is 2024 to 2026, so...
Okay, so I'm reading this correctly.
But each year, you are. Each year, we have to get it board-approved. Where it used to be a span of time, now you have to see it every year.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I was reading that right.
I understand.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it. I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Twenty, approval of school counseling guidance plans 2025-2026 school year. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent. Approve the updates to the counseling plan for the 2025-2026 school year. May I have a motion, please?
Yep.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Twenty-one, 2025-2026 tax warrant. Resolved at the Board of Education has been authorized to raise for the current budget for the 2025-2026 school year a sum not to exceed $20,605,985. The tax levy will be funded as follows. Tax levy, $7,983,478. Therefore, be it resolved that the board fix the equalization rates by town and confirm the extension of taxes as they appear on the final tax roll. And be it hereby directed that the tax warrant of this board duly signed shall be affixed to the final tax rolls authorizing the collection of said taxes to begin on September 1st, 2025, and end October 31st, 2025, giving the tax warrant an effective period of sixty-one days at the expiration of which time the tax collector shall make an accounting in writing to the boards. And it is further directed that delinquent tax penalties shall be fixed as follows. Payment September 1 through September 30th is no penalty. Payment October 1 through October 31st, 2% penalty. Payment November 1 and after is a 3% penalty. May I have a motion, please?
Yep.
Second?
Second.
In front of you, you will see this piece of paper. It was not initially in our backup notes, but is also gonna be signed. So the, all, there's four documents. There's Lee Roy Kilmum.
Wheatland and Riger.
Yes, thank you. Wheatland and Riger. And so there's four that we will sign when we're back in executive session. This one, when I was cross-referencing, some stuff missed, so just, I wanted to point that out. Nothing, it just got overlooked. So I got it printed in front of you right now. Any questions about that?
Yes. Becky, who are we using to collect the taxes this year?
We're gonna use the same process that we used last year, but I'm going to monitor it very closely.
Obviously, I'm asking because I thought it was unfair that you and Jeremy had to bear, do a lot of work to resolve the issues. Have they made any commitments to us?
I think what, what I've been advised, just having lots of conversations with some other superintendents that have similar things, it's time for me to actually get out and do some face-to-face conversations. So I need to go into some of these locations that collect on our behalf, introduce myself, and just talk about what we need, and ask them questions about their process, and, you know, what can, if, if someone is to call me about their tax bill, like, what can I assure them? So I think it's time for me to get out and do some face-to-face, once we start, once we are not the collectors, and it's going into other places. Like, I just need to make sure people know what my expectations are. I'm gonna give that my best shot.
Good luck.
Thank you. I mean, we've also talked about you, I was telling Brennan the other day, like, even from the beginning of the printing of the tax bills last year, like, we actually need to read the tax bills. We're gonna have to stop and spot-check that things printed the right way. So we try to use vendors, right? And we want our vendors to take care of us and send us our stuff back. And I'm finding more and more that we have to read behind people that we're paying to do things for us. And that's, it's very challenging. So we are going to read behind them. We're not gonna have anything get mailed out until we've at least done some deeper spot-checking. I mean, obviously, Jeremy spot-checked last year, so we've gotta go deeper than that. So we're gonna have to do some good cross-checking. My hope is to come out on the other side. I'm sure we won't be perfect, but may we be better than last time for our own headaches' sake. Welcome aboard, Brennan Cohen.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. We're now gonna move to executive session. Resolved at the Board of Education adjourned to executive session at 8:34 PM to discuss the employment and employee history of particular persons and matters leading to the appointment. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. We'll be back after executive session. Resolved at the Board of Education, return to regular session at 10:35 PM. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. We're gonna go to personnel. Number one, approval of substitutes for the 2025-2026 school year. Resolved that the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent. Approve the appointment of substitute teachers and staff per the attached list. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Number two, annual reappointment of bus drivers. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent. Approve the annual reappointment of school bus drivers for the 2025-2026 school year as listed. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Number three, resolution amendment. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent. Approve the amended resignation of bus driver to the resignation for purpose of retirement of Richard Greer Bus Driver. Motion, please?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Number four, permanent appointment of cook manager. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent. Approve Lindsay McKay to the permanent position of cook manager effective August 23rd, 2025, upon successful completion of probationary term ending on August 22nd, 2025. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Five, permanent appointment of custodian. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent. Approve William Van Alken to the permanent civil service position of custodian, effective August 28th, 2025, upon successful completion of probationary term ending on August 27th, 2025. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Number six, appointment of automotive mechanic. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent. Appoint Jonathan Stettler to the 1.0 FTE provisional civil service position of automotive mechanic in compensation agreement, effective August 4th, 2025. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Number seven, appointment of district treasurer. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent. Appoint Desiree Lyman to the 1.0 FTE provisional civil service position of district treasurer in compensation agreement, effective August 4th, 2024. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
Yeah, 25. Let's amend that, please.
Thank you. August 4th, 2025. Motion?
I'll make it.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Appointment of secretary to the superintendent district clerk. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent. Appoint Sherry Murdock to the 1.0 FTE probationary civil service position of secretary to the superintendent district clerk, effective August 13th, 2025. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Number nine, appointment of special education teacher. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent. Appoint Lindsay Dooley to the 1.0 FTE probationary tenure position of special education teacher, effective August 28th, 2025, through August 27th, 2029. The appointee holds professional certification in students with disabilities, grades seven through 12, and ELA, grades seven through 12. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Number 10, appointment of secondary English teacher. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent. Appoint Patrick Pertel to the 1.0 FTE probationary tenure position of secondary English teacher, effective August 28th, 2025, through August 27th, 2029. The appointee holds initial certification in ELA arts, English Language Arts, seven through 12. May I have a motion, please?
I move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Number 11, resignation of elementary assistant principal. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, except with regret and best wishes. The resignation of Peter Green, elementary assistant principal, effective July 31st, 2025. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Twelve, resignation of elementary teacher. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, accept the resignation of Erin Hopkins, elementary teacher, effective July 28th, 2025. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just wanna publicly thank Erin for all her years of service here at Caladonia Mumford. She will be missed. Good luck to her as she returns back to the home district where she's raising her children. And we're happy for her, but we will miss her.
Yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Resignation of elementary special ed teacher. Resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, accept the resignation of Michelle...
Lane Schwager.
Lane Schwager, thank you. Elementary special ed teacher, effective August 28th, 2025. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'll say the same thing. I just wanna, I feel like when they watch this back, they should know we cared very much about them. Michelle will also be missed. Very talented teacher. We're happy for her that she's made this decision for herself and her family, but she will be missed.